I like to call the Fairfield County Council regular meeting to order. Winchburn, South Carolina, Monday, June 14th, 2021, six o'clock PM. Can we get approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the approved agenda. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Pose its nay. So the agenda stands approved. Now we have an invocation by Councilmember Paulie.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for everyone that's here tonight. And we pray that we will make the decisions as in the best interest of all the citizens of Fairfield County. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Down to item number four, approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes, May 24th, June 1st, and June 3rd. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve all three sets of minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Pose its nay. So we, all the minutes approved. Public presentation non, first public comments section. Ms. Davies, do we have any?
We have two who've signed to speak tonight. First, Mr. Jeff Morris, speaking on budget matters.
Evening, Council. My purpose for raising issues relative to the budget is that I see things on the agenda such as 911 Center, significant expenditures, I think necessary expenditures, and things that went through a careful process to eventually be resolved in the manner that it was resolved. Seems like it worked to me. Budgeting, however, has significantly changed in the advent of a settlement with Dominion. Much of the money that's coming to the county is pre-allocated in a way that I would think would normally be a consequence of careful, reasoned budget work. Now, that can't work that way necessarily if it's in the nature of a settlement. Obviously, the county and Dominion have to resolve a complex set of issues, difficult legal arguments, and risks and potential benefits. There's nothing we can do about that. But it's a little bit unusual, at least in my experience, to see settlements that are so detailed in this regard where specific allocations of funds are set up for certain kinds of things. Now, I may or may not have objections to any of those allocations. I have questions about them. It's unclear to me how much time and effort was put into understanding exactly the consequences of these things, and it just comes as a done deal. And that is a difficult thing for a citizen to swallow because you don't have confidence that this was something that was determined for the best interests of the county generally. Dominion's interests are very clearly in the forefront here. That's not a surprise. They're the ones writing the check. Understand that. That's how settlements work. But I look at some of the things in those settlements and I say, gee, there are some things that some people in this county are going to do very well by. We have a county where the median income is about $38,000, family income. We have teachers whose average salary is just under $50,000. That's one teacher. That's not that teacher's family. I would guess that a number of those teachers have multiple earners in their family, and so their median income would be actually quite a bit north of $50,000. But without any budget consideration and what might be able to be used to help the general population and especially our citizens who are in greatest need, teachers are going to get a big boost here. I think teachers should get raises. I used to be a teacher. I'd love to have had one myself. But I think it doesn't fit very well with a careful budget analysis, and I wish that that would be kept in mind by the council as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the old hospital property.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County. First of all, the description here, I'm assuming that we meant current, old hospital property, current county property, and sale of those buildings. And if that indeed is the case, and remember, that's county property, there's several things to consider. First of all, is why the purchase was made of that property to begin with. And that was, very simply, to keep, maintain, and improve health care in the county. It facilitated enough money to keep the hospital open another year so that we could then get providence onboard. It also facilitated keeping doctors and others in those offices. So my question is, number one, are you still meeting those commitments with the sale of that property? Particularly, have we reviewed with the doctors and with the other, well, handful of tenants in that building so that we don't reverse the initial intention of the purchase of that property? And it would be a grave injustice if we had the doctors move or leave because of this sale. Number two, what's happening to all the other few tenants that we have? What's going to happen to them? And then lastly, what's going to be the purpose of that property? And if we thought through and if we planned it, as I've just laid out, are we going to keep the doctors? Are we going to take care of the current tenants, long-term and short-term? What's going to happen there? Number two, or I guess number four, is what's the deal? Are we going to give a tax break, which I assume we will, to the purchaser? And what are those tax breaks? When will they start paying taxes? And that's a nice thing in selling that property to a private organization because we can finally, for the first time in a long time, collect taxes on that property. So what's the plan here? That's what I'm asking. What is the plan? What is the plan for the tenants? What is the plan for the county? What is the plan for the revenue after the sale is made? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes this segment.
Okay, we're down to item number seven, public hearing, and we have three. First one, A, an ordinance authorizing amendments to a redevelopment agreement providing for the new county administration building so as to provide support for the erection of a monument to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. or a similar historical figure and to provide support for the use of the teachage as a museum memorializing African-American heritage in the county. So we're go-
One sec. Before we start, could you explain the similar historic figure, verbiage?
Yes, sir. One of the things we, initially, we thought we might be able to do is, you know, the MLK monument and some historical figure. When we, when it was introduced to Dominion, they bought into the MLK monument. That's where they bought in. That's what stayed on the item. So that's what we're with, the MLK monument, and that's what it's, that's what it is. Because Dominion really is paying for the monument.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a public hearing. So the public hearing will start now at 6:09. And do we have any?
We have three who wish to speak. First, Ms. Yvette Howard.
Good evening, Council. Again, there is an attempt to address inequality in Fairfield County. How many times have we been down this road before? Usually with no positive results and, at best, inadequate results. This time, it comes in the form of memorializing our heritage in a museum and a monument on Fairfield County-owned property. Much has been said about the need for economic development in Fairfield County. Due to centuries of unequal treatment, and by the way, continued unequal treatment, our residents, of our residents by the government, a significant portion of the citizenry have been unrecognized and undocumented. Many injustices were done to our people in the past. I'm sure you don't need me to recite examples of what I'm talking about. Much has been said about economic development in this county. A strategic plan paid for by the county and completed in recent years stated that race relations is a problem here. This initiative can provide a true history for all and help guide current and future generations to a better way of life in Fairfield County.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Morris.
Jeff Morris, District Two. I would join the comments that were just made. I think they were very well-stated. What I would like to add, though, is something that I didn't realize until four minutes ago. When I read what this ordinance was, it said a monument to honor Martin Luther King or similar figure. Now, we're told it's just for Martin Luther King, can't be for anybody else because that's the way Dominion wanted it. Okay? If that's true, and I have no reason to believe otherwise, then the ordinance should have been written this way. If it's not true, then it shouldn't be stated that way. We need to get actual, correct information there. Secondly, it seems to me that any decent settlement along these lines would have said something like, up to $1.5 million for this monument. I don't know what it says. I couldn't get it. I got a copy of the proposed ordinance. It doesn't say anything about it. It says there's an attached Exhibit A. Couldn't see Exhibit A. And I understand that these documents can't just fly around anywhere, but on a third reading, I think by then, citizens ought to have a look at the full picture. Ultimately, I think we need to be very cautious about a settlement like this. While $100 million sounds like a lot of money, it's not that much when you compare it to the, anywhere from 25 to 50 or even $100 million that's been talked about that would have been coming in. Let's just take the low number, 25 million. It doesn't take very long to get to 100 million. It takes four years. Even simple arithmetic will tell us that. So the current value, the present value of what would have been in place had Dominion and its predecessors lived up to their deal, was substantially more than 100 million and probably north of $1.5 billion, all of which was anticipated to be available to really help bring this county forward. We didn't get that. We couldn't get that. And I can only assume that the county did its very best to come up with the best settlement it could. It had capable legal representation, so there we are. We got the best we could. But I urge you to be very cautious about letting the other side, who is maybe not admitting wrongdoing but writing big checks, still carry the day. For example, my recollection is that the wastewater treatment plant was just too expensive to do it the way it's now going to be done. So we're going to pay twice, or thereabouts, what it was going to cost us to get wastewater treatment. And some would say, well, that's just Dominion paying for it. Well, it isn't. It isn't. It's every one of us. And so I hope you'll be very, very circumspect about this and not just give in to everything that Dominion is offering. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright.
I agree with the previous speakers. In fact, it's going to be some redundancy here. The, this ordinance, it's way too vague. This is not an ordinance. This is just some kind of throw against the wall and see if it sticks writings. I mean, the way it reads, "Ride support for erection of some monument somewhere at some price." Fill in the blanks. And "Ride support for the museum at some price in some form." I mean, we've talked about before, Shirley is brilliant. If you don't plan, you plan to fail. And that, this ordinance, has "plan to fail" written all over it. How are we going to hold anybody accountable for this? Whether it's you guys, whether it's the developers or who? This is just way too vague. This is like somebody woke up from a dream and said, oh, I'd like this. And all that turns out, that's what is on this paper. There's no specificity to it. Jeff pointed that out, and there's a great need for this, but let's get specific. Let's do it right. Let's plan it so it ends right. Let's find out what's in here. How are the citizens even going to know? In fact, there was, there was, there's a meeting two ago, there was some argument about even where it's going to go, the monument. And I guess that's, I don't know if that's up in the air or not, but it's not specified here. Nothing specified. You can't get a, you can't succeed without being specific and without planning in detail, and this ordinance has failure written all over it due to its vagueness. Its intentions are great, but it's in, but the sad thing is, its vagueness is dooming it to failure. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else sign to speak.
Okay, so that's, we're now closing this public hearing at 6:17 PM. Okay, but down to item B, ordinance to establish a military rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning in July 1, 2021. So we want to open this public hearing at 6:17 PM. Did anyone want to speak?
Yes, we have two speakers. First, Mr. Jeff Schaefer.
... for yet. The mileage rate, I sure hope is not going to be increased because we could have passed the penny tax and been ahead of all these little problems financially. Is it possible for you folks, and when I say you folks, I mean the four of you, who are a majority voting for all the wrong things? I don't know. I don't get up in the morning and say to myself, I want to be average today, even below average today. That isn't, has never been my goal, but then again, I can certainly see the aptitude for that behavior from the squad, which is how I'm going to refer to you. Since I'm hopeful that maybe one of the four of you will come to your senses and stop being led around by Mr. Trapp, whose ideals and thoughts go back to the days of Heinley and see how much you can suck out of the taxpayers.
On of order.
On of order.
No name calling.
No name calling. I'm not going to call your name.
On of order, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
You upset? Sorry.
No, not at all, Mr.-
Good. I'm sure you've been instructed by how to take money from the county.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, sir.
Let me tell you, one thing-
Stop my clock.
We can stop the clock, but one thing you're not going to do is going to refer to councilmembers in a very negative and harsh way like you're doing. It's not going to happen. Stop it.
This is a harsh way? I'm giving you facts. Would you like to hear the facts?
Go ahead.
So on that note, $42 a trip from your house to the county, six times in a week. I could do the math, and I could see that that new truck you're driving? I'm very disappointed in the process. Let's see how much I can take and how little I can give and how upset I get at people who say something that's truthful. I challenge you to go and make some changes for the public's best interest. That means all of us. Do you think about abusing expense accounts for mileage is okay? How about us, the taxpayers, paying for your damn cell phone? The one you had before you were elected? The internet service you had before you were elected? And put that in as an expense reimbursement? Trust me, that all has to say goodbye. In three minutes, I can't tell you all the things that are wrong and going in the wrong direction. But if I see no attempt to correct them, I'll be back and voice them again. If you want public approval, then please stop acting like the job is your personal ATM, meal ticket, and celebrity photo shoot all in one. You were elected to improve the lives of the citizens, not just yours. If you have any conscience at all and to see the right thing is done, then I propose to you to install an oversight committee. If you're not doing anything wrong, then that should be a no-brainer. But if you're guilty already and decide not to do that, then when elections times come and the fact that you refuse to have one, every district's, one person from every district sit on a committee and have that committee report its findings to the council and to the public, I have to tell you that your seat as a council member will be empty and you will be voted out of that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright.
I think we're rushing in to establishing a mileage rate. And the reason I say that is, I'm not certain that our budget process, well, I'm sure it wasn't done right. And when I say that, number one, the transparency was lacking through the whole process, which limited citizen input. limited citizen input. We never did get a budget worksheet so we could easily compare it to last year. We never did get an opportunity to research what was going on. So without a budget being properly done, without proper citizen input, or without facilitating proper citizen input, it's very difficult to get a correct millage rate if the budget is not right. And doing a budget, you need everybody's help and, and input. On the other aspect of the millage rate, the importance of the millage rate is paramount when it comes to attracting new residents and new businesses. Now, does anyone know of the leadership, how our millage rate compares to other counties? Well, it's easy to look up. It's under South Carolina Association of Counties. But if you don't know how it compares to other counties, you have no business voting on it. If you don't know how our mill rate compares to other counties, you have no business voting on this. You can't vote on things without having full knowledge. And how we compare to other counties, both in mill value and mill rate, is paramount. Now, I'm not saying we need to cut. I'm not advising you in any way, because I don't have a budget that I think was done right, and I don't have all the facts. But I do know that it's paramount that you have a correct budget. And just one example of this budget that, that makes the mill rate very tenuous is the fact that we cut some $93,000 from economic development when we, in, while we're in recovery. I realize we may have had to make some cuts, but I didn't see any cuts from council. The highest salaried council for the counties our size, by far. We can't do the mill rate without knowledge, without knowing how we compare to other counties, without a budget that was built on a sound foundation with input from the citizens, and without understanding how we compare to other counties. You probably won't listen to me, but it's at all of our peril if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else sign to speak?
Thank you. So we close the public hearing at 6:24. We're down to Item C, an ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to add new fees for the 2021-22 fiscal year. We open this public hearing up at 6:24. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
I'm not complaining about the fees. Again, as with the three previous discussions, it's the process. And maybe, maybe we just don't know the transition or process for the new fees. But again, and I heard it mentioned, "Well, we looked at other counties and this, this, these fees seem reasonable with other counties," and I think one or two were mentioned. But we need much more complete detail than a few other, few other counties that we're not really sure of, that these fees are in line with. And remember, as Jeff pointed out, it's not like we have a high income average in our county. And it's not like we're not just recovering from the COVID experience, and our economy's still in recovery. And it's not like that, you know, our, there's many citizens out there that are still struggling, citizens and, and small businesses in particular. We've lost many small businesses. Others are teetering. Can they really afford more fees? Can citizens afford more fees? Have we looked at that? Or do we just decide, "Let's fill in some gaps in the budget with higher fees"? I don't know the reasoning, because we didn't see all, the budget process itself was not transparent. So let's consider the citizens. Let's consider the small businesses. Let's look at what we would have to pay elsewhere in counties with similar income levels as ours before we move ahead with raising fees. But I could be wrong. Maybe this really means you're lowering fees. You guys let us know. Thank you. And again, probably won't listen to me or heed me, but again, it's all of our peril if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else sign to speak?
So we, we're going to close this public hearing at 6:26 PM. Okay, we, we're now down to the ordinance and resolution orders, Item A, the third and final reading, orders number 771, authorizing amendments to redevelopment agreement filed for a new county administrative building so as to provide support for the erection of a monument to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a similar historical figure, and to provide support for the use of the teacher as a museum memorializing African-American heritage in the county.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? I, I, I got to comment. Mr., will you show, will you show the picture of the monument? Just so people can sort of take a look at it. One of the things I must, I, I must confess that, as we, as we look at trying to do this, the reason, the reason we tried to do this is, is so that we can have the Mount Zion building acceptable to, to a community that did not find the building itself acceptable. That's why we did it. One of the things, as we made that, as the county made that decision, although I voted against it, according to The Voice and Saving Fairfield Group, they said that contract was ironclad. Okay? It was ironclad. But let me tell you something. We're already getting complaints about the building today. Already. Okay? That there, there are things that, offices are too little. Okay? We know that the sheriff department didn't want to go there. Okay? There are many facets of that building that, when people started using the gym, the community itself in that area, they're going to be very displeased. So let me tell you, so let me tell you something. The thing is, that we have to do, we have to take this and try to do the best we can with the situation that we find now. Okay? So let me tell you something. And I want you all to look up where it says "community." One of the things we've been, that, we went to a county on last Thursday, trying to look at how they did this work. Okay? One of the things they're doing down there is, is they're taking, where you see those, those items coming down government, where you honor other people. You honor other people that contribute to the county in such a way that their name ought to be put on this plaque. And so, and we thought it was a very good idea. We thought we didn't need to reinvent the wheel, because this was an approach that was adopted by a very progressive county, doing a lot of good things. So that's where we are. So, if no other discussion, are you ready? Yes.
I, I will just say, when I was chair, that was one of the considerations of offsetting the monument with a possible Martin Luther King statue. And I did put in for an ad hoc committee, but I did receive information from the NAACP and members of the community that that was not good enough. So as my constituents say they don't want it over there, I'll still be voting no to place the monument by...
Okay, thank you. Any other? I, I believe it's good enough, and I'm, so, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Poses?
Nay.
So the record, let the record show there are four to three voting in favor of the monument for Dr. King at Mount Zion Building. Let the record show that there were three who voted against it. Item B, third and final reading, orders number 769, to establish a millage rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning in July 1, 2021.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Poses nay? Let the record show seven zero. C, third and final reading, orders number 770, an ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to add new fees for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
You're going to get, hold on just a minute. You're going to get someone to explain what those fees are for the, for the citizens?
Okay, Mr. Colley, you want to get, Ms. Bass?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bass, you could come up and explain that.
The new fees, this is our general fee schedule, which is available online. And there are a couple of new fees. The first department, animal control, is adding a transport fee for surrender. And this is a $25 fee if somebody calls and says, "I want to hand my pet over, but I want you to come pick it up." And they're also adding an impound fee. We have an impound fee, but they're adding a second offense because of the repeat occurrences. Those are the two new fees in animal control. The coroner's office is adding a fee for transport from a long-term care facility. And this occurs when there may be a death at a long-term care facility, and they call the coroner's office versus the funeral home. Maybe they can't locate the next of kin or whatever, but they've got to do something with the body. And again, this is for the coroner's office to pick the body up and hold it until the long-term care facility can locate the next of kin to pick up the body. And that's a fee of $125. The third department that is adding any fees is Parks and Recreation, and these go along with their renting of their facilities. And that is for use of the ball field. If some, you know, other county or organization wanted to hold a game. And also a fee per hour for use of the lights, a fee for the concession stand usage. And then there are a couple of parks that also have electricity available, and there would be a fee that could be used for electric outlets, you know, if somebody wanted to have a function and they needed electricity. So these are the only three departments that were adding any new fees.
Ms. Hollis, does that require a Fairfield County employee to be present from the Recreation Department with these events going on?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to get that from the Recreation Department.
I know on the park rentals, they do not have an employee there, but I think anytime they rent out like the ball fields, I think they try to have somebody there.
What about security or anything? Are they required to have security at any events?
As far, I'm not sure about the parks. We try to have somebody available, you know, with bigger events, though.
Okay, one of the things, Mr. Colley, maybe get Mr. Paulie answered to his question, but that, that's not concerning the fees. Okay, we've also gone through the discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Poses nay? Let the record show that seven zero. Resolution, number 2021-06, a resolution to replace resolution, number 2021-05, authorizing Fairfield County to purchase certain real property in Fairfield County, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and delivery of an option agreement proven in the form of the proposed sales contract and other related matters.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?
Nay.
Okay, let the record show that it's four three. Item E, resolution number 2021-07, a resolution to replace resolution number 2021-04, authorizing Fairfield County to purchase certain real property in Fairfield County, South Carolina, authorizing the execution and delivery of an option agreement proven in the form of the proposed sales contract and other related matters.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
For the purpose of the public, you mind just giving a brief description, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis, you want to?
This is a resolution to revise a resolution that was previously adopted to address a change in the terms after the discussion with the particular seller.
Thank you. And I think we had 18 months on it. Instead of having 18 months, we put six months. Correct?
Mr. Chair, I believe this one was just the, the terms of the agreement. I don't think the option length was involved with that, that resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other questions? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Poses?
Nay.
I let the record show four three. All right. Board and commission minutes, Chamber of Commerce, disability and special needs, receive that as information. Item 10, board and commission appointments, none. Old business, none. New business, none. Mr. Colley, administration report.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we are glad to have Reverend Ted Belton. He is from Zion Pilgrim Baptist, and he has volunteered his efforts as a community leader to be working with SLED to bridge the gap between the African-American community and law enforcement. And Reverend Belton, if you'll just take the podium over there and give us a little bit of information about what y'all are doing.
Good evening. We are honored to be here tonight. I want to thank Chairman Moses Bell and Vice Chair Green and the other board members for allowing us to come and share with you tonight. Several weeks ago, maybe, maybe months ago, I received a call from Special Agent Eric Rosendale, which is here with us tonight. Would you stand, Agent? He's a part of the Community Relation Division. He informed me that SLED was trying to build a better relationship between the African-American community, which is called Bridging the Gap. We did not hesitate to join this effort. I asked him what, what we could do and how we could help serve Fairfield County along with law enforcement. I thought about the climate that we're living in, not just on a national level, but right here in the state of South Carolina. Think about black, represent less than a third of the state of South Carolina population, but we account for almost half of the shooting by law enforcement. And there must be a change. There must be a change to the narrative between African-American and law enforcement. If we won't change in this narrative, we must change our mindset, each of us, both the law enforcement in our community, how we treat one another and how we look at one another. Gandhi stated, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." And the first thing we began to do, to reach out to local law enforcement, both our sheriff department and also our public safety department. And I must say to us tonight that both Sheriff Montgomery and Chief Seabrook was willing to listen and to help us, because both of, both of them understood what was taking place in our nation and in our state, that something needed to take place, something needed to happen, both on law enforcement side and the community side. Not only did we reach out to law enforcement, we reached out to our Fairfield County School Superintendent, Dr. J.R. Green, and to our South Carolina House of Representatives, Annie McDaniel. We asked them, would they be willing to be a part of a town meeting? They agreed, in which we had on April the 15th, 2021. And I must say on tonight that from this town hall meeting has, has been overwhelming. There have been people who were... been overwhelming. There have been people who would like to partner with us in this endeavor, and I must say that we are heading in the right direction. But, but as we all know, that change will not happen overnight. Uh, change began by coming together, working for a common cause, which is bridging the gap between our communities and law enforcement. We met back on June 8th with both SLED, our Sheriff Department, along with Public Safety, and we presented a plan of action, how we could actively help or better our relationship between law enforcement. Uh, we have a planned meeting, uh, that has already been set, but I'm asking this board for your help in making this bridge, the gap, a reality. Again, I want to thank Chairman Bell, Vice Chairman Green, for giving me this opportunity to share. In closing, Theodore Roosevelt stated, "Do what you can with what you have and where you are." Thank you for this opportunity.
Um, um, before you go on, Pastor Belton, um, do council members have any question and comments?
Pastor Belton, I just want to say thank you for presenting. And coming from law enforcement, I know that is a tough hill to, to climb. So if anything is requested of me, please reach out. I'd be definitely happy to help.
Thank you very kindly.
And we certainly appreciate the, uh, involvement of a lot of our local pastors and others in the community. Thank you so much for reaching out.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
And, and again, Pastor Belton, um, thank you very much for being here tonight. Um, it, it mean a lot to, to us for you to come. And, and, um, the work that you are doing is going to be beneficial to this county as a whole. So again, thank you. And, um, and Agent...
Rosendale.
Right, Roseberry. So we want to thank you for, for, for being here. And, um, and we talked about this when we was on the walk, um, for against guns and violence, um, and that we had in Winnsboro some, some weeks ago. So again, thank you all for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Question, Agent Roseberry, is this your only duty assignment right now, or?
Uh, I am the Community Relation Agent for the entire Midlands. So I have from Aiken, uh, from the Georgia line to the North Carolina line. Uh, but Pastor Belton has, uh, has a passion and has just taken this on, uh, and, uh, along with Sheriff Montgomery and Chief Siebel's, uh, have, and, and several of the, uh, elected leaders here in, um, in Fairfield County have just jumped on board, along with the school board and the superintendent. So there's just a, a huge opportunity to make great strides, uh, in those relationships and, and bridge that gap back to, uh, where ultimately everybody wants it on, on all sides, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, um, we are requesting council approval for a request of action to pre-qualify engineers for small construction projects with design fees under $50,000. And I'll just read real quick the purpose of this, and Ms. Bass is here, uh, to answer any questions that y'all might have. Um, the purpose of this request is to recommend the selection of pre-qualified firms to satisfy the engineering services contract in providing professional services in connection with small construction projects. Total professional fees for these types of projects will be $50,000 or less. Engineering services, services will be on an as-needed or as-assigned basis and allow a contract to be extended to those firms selected.
Can we get a motion to approve?
Motion to, motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Nay? And it proposes nay? Let the record say seven zero.
All right, and next we are requesting approval on another request of action, uh, installation of multi-rooftop antennas and cabling accessories for the 911 data room at the new administration building and future 911 call center located at 250 Walnut Street, um, as recommended by the Administration and Finance Committee, um, to approve this. But is Ms., is Brad, Mr. Douglas around, or you want to explain a little bit about it?
I'm not sure if he's still here.
I think he's in the back.
Okay. Can you just give us a brief description?
Um, yes, and I left my agenda back there, but I think this is, um, C and D coming up. Thank you very much. Um, really, C and D are all, um, with the same part. They're just, um, separate requests of action because, um, C is one that we needed sooner, and that's where I put it and get it requested. But, um, all the quotes came in about the same time, but that's just, just for clarification on why there are two different, uh, request of actions. But it's all, it's all for the 911 call center, the new, the new facility. But just, uh, the first one, just to stay with the agenda, the first one, the $35,968.46, that is for the, um, antennas and cabling that go from the rooftop of the Mountain Zion Building into our 911 call center, or actually into our data room, um, for our dispatchers. And that, that's in essence what connects, um, all the radio traffic into our call centers. Um, and that's, um, exclusively what, what that, um, quote there is for. We're just, we are, just for my, my clarity, we're just talking about C right now. Is that correct? Okay.
Can we get a motion to approve?
Aye.
Okay, all right, okay. Um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Um, let the record show seven zero for item C.
Uh, item D is another request for action, request of action, uh, for additional items, services associated with the proposed new 911 call center located at the new administration building also. And, uh, Mr. Douglas, if you'll just give a brief description of that one too.
Yes, sir. These are all the other parts excluding the, uh, wiring and the antennas. This is for the radios, our 911 center consoles that connect everything, our 911 One Vesta system, which is like the, the brains of everything that brings upon calls and everything in, um, and down to the furniture. But in essence, what we, what we have to do, because, um, as everybody knows, our 911 call, our current 911 call center is here in, in this building. Um, and of course, that's not something you can pack up and, you know, shut it down on Friday, and we're going to move everything, and we're going to start up on Monday. Um, so we're going to have to create, while we have this one still running, we're going to create another call center. Um, and just, uh, had this moved not even being made, some of our, um, systems there are outdated and will not be supported past December of 2021. So even if we weren't moving, we're going to be upgrading a lot of equipment anyway, just out of necessity. But, um, when we create this new call center, we're going to have to, um, basically keep this other one up and running until we can get the new call center going and make sure that we troubleshoot everything and make sure that it is, you know, uh, there are no issues with it. And we'll keep this other one running, um, as a failsafe until then. And when they say, when all the persons involved say we got all the kinks worked out, then that's when we'll kill this one here.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved in second. Um, we already had some discussion, but is, um, are there any more discussions? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? To let the record show that seven zero for item D.
Mr., we have, we have one additional item here that we wanted to, um, bring forward tonight to, or, or another presentation, I should say, um, Mr. Gene Stevens from Chamber of Commerce. Um, they have the Ag and Art Tour and the Farm Today, to, to Table Dinner coming up this weekend, and we're just, uh, glad to have him here so he can give us a little more information on that.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Carter, for adding me to the agenda. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bell, for reaching out to me, uh, to come and speak to y'all. Uh, thank you, counsel, for having me. Um, so this weekend, we have the Ag and Art Tour. Uh, agritourism is a big thing in the state of South Carolina. Um, the Ag and Art Tour actually goes on in, I think, 11 different counties. Uh, we're the only one doing it this weekend, and, uh, we traditionally do it on Father's Day weekend. But you'll have, uh, four different farms that are showcased throughout the county. You also have the farmer's market, where we'll have a lot of vendors and things set up. You, um, we also have some ancillary sites. If you want some more information about the actual, like, we have a map, um, we have the addresses and stuff like that for the farms and some information. You can see about what is at each farm. Uh, you can go to different Facebook pages. You can have the Ag and Art Fairfield County. You also have the Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce. On those pages, there's a lot of information on those, um, if you want to know this. Also the kickoff dinner this Thursday night, uh, the, uh, Mayor Cookendorf actually reached out to me, uh, about possibly hosting it in Ridgeway, which, uh, since I've started with the chamber, we've tried to do some more things with Ridgeway. Um, and so what we're going to do is actually, it's pretty neat. We're actually going to shut Dogwood down right in front of Century House. Um, and we're actually going to have the table lined up in the middle of the road. Uh, the town is draping lights across the street, uh, and it'll be, it'll be nice, be very nice. I mean, how often do you get a chance to eat dinner in the middle of the street? Um, but it'd be a very nice meal. Uh, tickets are still available. You can actually go to our Facebook page. You can go to the farmer's market page, Facebook page. You can go to, um, there's a lot of Facebook pages. Actually, everybody should have gotten an email, um, for that. But, um, tickets are still available if you'd like to come and, uh, if you have any questions.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, how much would the meal cost? Uh, how much would it, the money, would it be coming out of your budget to pay for the?
Uh, the, we cover that through, um, the price of the tickets. And then, uh, we actually have some sponsorships, uh, from different organizations, like Farm Bureau's, uh, sponsoring and things like that. So all that is actually covered, um, out of the price for tickets.
Thank you, sir.
So, so how much are the, um, the tickets?
The ticket is, uh, $40 for an individual, $75 for a couple. But I'll, I'll be honest with you, you get a lot more than what that ticket is worth, a lot. And, yeah. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, 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 thank you, um, very much, um, Mr. Call, for your report. Um, again, thank you. Correct the council report, non-county council time. Do we have any, any, any members of council want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one or two thing. Could we have our attorney to check on the reimbursement that Mr., uh, one of the speakers was talking about, uh, the cell phone, to make sure we're in line with the mileage and all that?
Um, yes, sir, we can do that.
And also, can we get a report from, uh, I don't know where we get it from, about all the lawsuits that's been settled, uh, against, on behalf of any council member over the last four or five years? And the amount that was paid, uh, either by the counter or by the insurance?
Okay, we can do that. Okay, um, anything else? Um, we got down to item number 16, executive session. Um, can we get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If we go into executive session, number item A, contractual matter, discussion concerning possible sale of hospital property and existing leases pursuant to South Carolina Code. Um, personnel matter, discussion concerning the position of the county administrator as it relates to the selection of executive recruiting consultant pursuant to South Carolina Code. Item C, the receipt of legal advice discussion regarding two pending legal action items, roadways in Fairfield County pursuant to South Carolina Code. Um, um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? To let the record show that, um, seven zero to go into executive session at 6:55 PM.
How you doing?
Good.
Rick Graham.
No, Rick. No, man.
We got everybody? Can we get a motion to come out of executive session?
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second that we come out of executive session. Nothing was taken care of in executive session. No votes in executive session. So are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Okay, let the record show seven zero coming out of executive session at seven forty seven. Okay.
Motion.
Do we have anything?
I have a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make the motion that we authorize the chairman and the vice chairman to handle interviewing of the position of county administrator and to bring a recommendation back to full council when it get to that point.
Okay, and that's the firm to select the firm. Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. That the chair and the vice chair talk to the consultant firm and bring it back a selection to full council. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Polls is nay?
Nay.
So who all, so how many nays? So it's two nays? Okay, five two. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All in favor of adjournment, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Polls is nay? You stand adjourned.